Good afternoon and welcome to the October meeting of the Murfreesboro City Historic Zoning Commission. We do have a quorum, so I call the meeting to order. You all should have received the minutes of the regular meeting from August. And are there any edits, credits, changes, corrections, I should say, or anything else that needs to be added to these minutes? If not, the Chair would welcome a motion to approve as written.
Make a motion. We approve as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved then. I would like to go ahead and start by introducing Matthew Blomley, who's here with us today to introduce some of our new players.
Yes, sir. Thank you Chairman Thompson, and I'm happy to be here. I'm going to jokingly say, but there's a ring of truth to this, that you have three staff members here, myself, Ms. Kerr, and Ms. Driver, who have a collective zero Historic Zoning Commissions in our time with the city. So, we are going to be looking to you to help us along, as I know you all have a lot of experience on this commission and a lot of knowledge. Of course, we relied on Mr. Lewis for a long, long time, and we knew he had this commission well-covered by staff, and we've had several different people working with you since Mr. Lewis retired. So, at any rate, as Chairman Thompson mentioned, my name is Matthew Blomley. My regular title is Assistant Planning Director. My temporary title is Acting Planning Director, as we have a vacancy at the Planning Director position right now. So, I'm happy to be here with you today to assist Ms. Kerr and Ms. Driver. Directly across the dais from me is Ms. Amelia Kerr. She's one of our planners on staff, and I mentioned before the meeting started, she's the one who actually did all of the work on this agenda, and she'll be presenting the items today, Ms. Amelia Kerr. And Ms. Katie Driver, from our legal department, is one of our staff attorneys. Ms. Driver's been with us for several months now, and Mr. Ives could not make it today, so she is going to provide our legal counsel today in Mr. Ives's stead. So, we're happy to be here and happy to work with you. Of course, Ms. Davis has more Historic Zoning Commission meetings under her belt than we could ever hope to have. But at any rate, we're here if we can do anything during the meeting, or for the Historic Zoning Commission members, please let us know, and I'll yield back to you Chairman Thompson.
Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate it very much, and we'd like to welcome you both to the meeting today and to help us out and do our jobs. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. If you would like to, then Amelia, go over our first item of business today.
Okay. The first item of my business is by Mr. Fletcher Holland, who is requesting to remove a tree and demolition of a carport shed that is currently located at 2255 Middle Tennessee Boulevard. The property adjacent to the north is the MTSU Alumni House. The property is zoned a single-family residential District 10, and it is within the East Main Street Historic Zoning District. The applicant, Fletcher Holland with Brock and Sons, represents Jeff and Ann Davis, is requesting the Historical Zoning Commission's approval for tree removal and demolition of a carport shed. This is to make room for future improvements, for future parking with the guest house and the deck included onto that, and a pool with landscaping and hardscaping to be submitted all at a later date.
Thank you very much. What questions does the commission have of the application?
I have one question, and that would be is the structure, contributing structure, to the historic district. It's either non-contributing or contributing, and I don't think the application mentions which it is. I suspect that it's not, but that might be something that we would need to know when the applicant does appear.
Ms. Kerr, if you wouldn't mind going through the photographs that you included in the agenda materials.
This is, of course, standing on Middle Tennessee Boulevard, shooting back through the driveway. The carport is in the very rear of the property. Let's see if I can get it. Can I blow it up?
Doesn't say, does it?
That's it.
And then there are more. That's the Alumni House to the right of this house. And then you've got this property to the left, and this is the actual property itself, the structure that they're wishing to demolish. And it does have some wear on it. And it's small. Like I said, they're wanting to replace this in the future with a, I'm assuming, I'm not sure if it's going back as a carport. I haven't seen any type of drawings yet, what they're planning to do, other than a schematics at the very back photo of your agenda materials that shows kind of what they're looking to do with the layout. It's that page there. They're calling it a carport garage with an apartment and with a deck. That, like I said, they're still in the drafting stages of that right now. They have not yet determined exactly how all that's going to work.
Yeah, I would doubt, Gib, that that's a contributing structure. Looks like an add-on at a future date. It really doesn't sit in with the current style of the house at all.
Yeah. And looking on this other map, I don't know if this map shows 2255 north, one block north.
This.
Right on.
That one. Okay. You see where the numbers 2255 are?
Mm-hmm.
If that's where it's located, then it's outside the historic.
No, it's not. If you look at this, this map here, it is actually, it is within the Historic Zoning Commission's.
It's hard to tell, but there is a yellow arrow pointing down from that number down there.
Yeah. For some whatever reason, it's not showing up on the map.
Then it's only a few houses off of East Main.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is actually the third house off of East Main, including the one on the corner.
He's the one that came and asked about the fence.
Some time ago, correct. So, the question would be to check the documents that we have in the city, on file in the city, which would indicate which structures are contributing and which are not. But, I mean, we can't determine that just by looking, even though it does appear that it might not be.
I don't, it in no way goes with the style of the house. Is that a Tudor style, or what kind?
Yeah, it would be called a Tudor styled house, but most, many of the times, the garages, carports, whatever you want to call them, really didn't match the style of the house. It's very common.
I just took it as it was an add-on, and then it's also been added on to the back of it, to, you know, like shed-like, and doesn't have a garage door.
It's common in the East Main district of having these structures.
Do we even have a list, Gib, that, I know we do for the homes, but for the carports?
For all of the structures should have been inventoried when the district was created, and that would include ancillary buildings, sheds, garages, all that sort of thing. And so, and many of those old sheds are not, like Jim said, they're not of the same style. And again, the district was established in 1980-something.
I think it was '84.
And at that point in time, the typical way of determining something's eligibility would be the first to determine the date of construction, which would have, at that time, would have had to have been 50 years prior, unless it was significant for some other reasons. So, it doesn't look like a 1934 building, but you never know.
Well, the other problem is National Register nominations, depending on how early it was prepared, did not address the supporting outbuildings and stuff. They just, they didn't get into contributing, non-contributing, just listed the main structure. So, with that, I think it's worth looking for it, but we don't know if it's actually in the East Main nomination. But definitely worth checking.
Yeah.
What other comments and questions does the commission have?
I would comment that, just an observation, the home itself appears to be more than likely late twenties, early thirties. You know, we're still seeing carriage houses at that point, usually, in the historic district. So, I'm led to believe this is a much later structure as well.
Mr. Jakes, I just looked on, pulled up the property assessor's page on my phone, and for this structure, it appears, assuming that the website is accurate, that it was built in 1932. The house was built in 1932.
Yeah, that seems appropriate, yeah.
Yeah. What other questions or comments?
Does it qualify for the guidelines for demolition when, like, number one and number two, the building's lost its architectural and historical integrity? And it's, and the building does not contribute, but you're saying you?
We don't know.
You don't know. But, I would think that the building has lost its architectural and historical integrity. I don't think it has any.
If it didn't have any to begin with, then it wouldn't matter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, would it be appropriate to approve the request based on the fact that we determine that it's a non-contributing factor? I mean, I just hate to see this drag on and drag on on this one point.
Well, the thing that concerns me about this is that we see an aerial site plan with the, you know, the new garage slash apartment is shown with a deck. We have a pool and two additions to the house, and I don't know, first off, does it overbuild the property? That would be up to city codes. Is it too big? Without further drawings and stuff, to just go and demolish the garage and the tree, the garage doesn't excite me too much, but I'd hate to see the tree lost when plans change. They asked for approval on the fence, and it never was installed. It hasn't been so far, and maybe they're waiting for a bigger project.
Do we have any jurisdiction over trees?
No.
We don't. So, they can take their tree down.
They can take it down at any point, at any point, and I would bet you size of it, that it fills their gutters with leaves all the time.
Their driveway.
Everything. I would hate to see it because...
They hate to see it go, too.
I bet, but I just, to me, I'd love to see the other plans before they just, if you go ahead and demolish it, but then you'd never do anything about it. You've lost the integrity of the tree in the garage. Somebody, if they decide to sell, somebody else may want it. But, I'm just one person commenting.
Well, I believe there are, I believe they will be doing this. I believe they will be doing this building.
Yeah, because I...
I'm not worried about that.
I think they were considering, because we never approved the fence.
Right. Oh, I thought we did.
No, I don't believe we approved it, and so, I think for a long time, the Davises were considering selling, possibly to the university, but it appears with this plan is now they've decided to stick and stay.
I'd love for it to stay.
Yeah. And so, I mean, that's just information that I've heard. They're not here to say one way or the other, but...
I think we just have to wait and let them speak for themselves. We can't...
Just go ahead and act on this.
I think we can't act on it without them being present. That's my feeling.
Well, we have acted on things before without somebody here.
We still don't know if it's contributing or not contributing.
Well, you know, that was my whole point.
Yeah.
If we can find, the administrative staff find out whether it's contributing or non-contributing, and then we can go forward, but...
I think it's incumbent on them to be present.
Well, their builder's supposed to be here.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not necessarily required, Gib. I agree, it would be nice if they were here or their contractor was here, but it's not mandatory.
I do remember when Gail Henry owned the house next to Junior's, she requested and got approval to remove the garage that looked a lot like this one, and she never did do it. She sold the house, but I see it as the same sort of thing, but I'm not disagreeing with you. It should be noted that if it's contributing or not.
We had, we had our garage, our shed.
It was a lot like yours, too.
Shed.
Yeah.
Leaned to. It was just, didn't, wasn't in keeping with our house at all, and then, when we added, we matched the garage.
Wow.
The style, the stick style to the house, and people don't even know, a lot of times, if it wasn't original, well, of course, it doesn't, you know, you wouldn't have a modern garage, but you can bet that the Davises are going to match their garage, their structure that they hope to build there, that it will match the historic house just as well as they can.
Is it, is it legal, Katie, to, the motion, I think, was to approve it, assuming that it was non-contributing? Is that legal?
I think that if you said that it doesn't have any historical integrity or importance, which is an alternative to the contributing factor, that would be fine.
That's how I saw it.
Well, I had the same situation at 346 East Main. When I first moved there, we had a two-car leaned-to garage and got the approval to demolish it and rebuild.
I would hope that we could, that we could approve the motion with that stipulation that we need to be sure, and that the staff can find out for us if it's a contributing factor, like the way David stated.
But is Katie saying, is Ms. Driver saying that it could be either/or?
That's the way I read that.
That's what you interpret.
You're saying even if it was non-contributing, we could still approve the demolition?
On an alternative basis, yes.
Would you like to restate your motion?
Okay. Well, I make a motion that we approve as submitted based on the finding out if the structure was contributing or non-contributing, and have the staff research that.
Can I ask the question? Is the motion to approve it, assuming that it is not contributing?
Yes, at this point. I mean, that's the safe way. I mean, we always can come back based on Ms. Driver's comment.
If it is contributing, then it's, then your motion is void, and then we have to come back.
Sure.
Is that acceptable?
Yes. That's what I think.
Do we have, okay, we have the motion as edited. Do we have a second?
I don't, it's not, can you clarify it some more? What am I voting, what am I voting on?
That approve the motion to cut the tree down and remove the garage slash carport, assuming that it is non-contributing.
Or, another way of saying it is, approve the demolition if the structure is non-contributing. And contrary to that, we would not approve it at this time. If it is contributing, we would need to have more information, or talk with the owner.
You got that, Brenda? Is that acceptable, his clarification?
I'm not sure that last part.
I would just say approve if non-contributing.
The question is if it's, if it's not listed, then it has to come back to us.
Well, if it's not listed one way or the other, we can, we...
Oh, that's true. It was, it has, because it hasn't been updated to state if it's contributing or non-contributing.
Could I make a motion to approve it as is? Or is that not?
If he doesn't get a second.
And then see if that goes, and then...
Well, first of all, if we can't get a second on my motion, then yes, you can do that.
Do we have a second on the motion?
I second David's motion.
Do we have any further discussion?
Not to call anybody out, Mr. Chairman. Someone joined us in the audience. Are you related to this? Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Mary May, did you have any?
I just think that, like Ms. Driver said, it could be either/or, and I think we're just really delaying their progress in improving another, attempt to improve another property in our downtown historic district. And if we keep doing this and delaying, it just makes it so hard for people. So, I disagree, but that's it.
I'd like to comment, too, before a final vote, if I could. I agree with what you're saying, Mary May. I find myself sometimes battling bundle of rights versus this historic overlay. I understand this structure could be contributing based on age, but based on the architectural details, and what I see, I see that there's no real contribution to the overall historic feel of this property. So, it's my opinion that it really should not be listed as a contributing structure.
Well, our opinions don't matter, because it's already been determined by the survey that was done in 1984. So, if the surveyor said it was contributing, then it is. It's not something that we can alter just by our conversation. The, it would have to be reassessed by an architectural historian, so it's just really, I mean, it's pretty cut and dry. It's either is, or it is not.
I totally understand that.
But if it is, it's still, it still qualifies for demolition under the lost its architectural and historical integrity, and the importance of its removal.
Well, we don't know if it's been altered. We can't, that's not something that we can say. This, it may be identical to the way it was constructed. We don't, I mean, you can't tell that from the photographs.
Well, I can tell you what?
That it's, if it's been altered or not.
Oh, it has. It has. It's definitely been altered. And it's got, yes.
Looks like it has two windows in this one picture, and then a window and a door as an apartment.
They altered it several years ago, maybe 10 or 15 years ago.
Is that when they added the apartment? I'm guessing it's an apartment.
It doesn't have an apartment over it.
But it's got two windows on one side and a window and a door on the other.
It's got, it's got a storage, just a storage section in the back, since they've never, since they don't have a garage door, and they've never really, they've just used it kind of as a shed, but they had no outside storage. So, no, it's no apartment.
Okay.
It's just a, it's just a storage room back there that they added on after they bought it from Bart Gordon, I think, yeah.
Could you restate the motion one more time?
We're about to change the motion.
You're about to change the motion?
No. My motion was...
Glad you're here.
My motion was to approve it as submitted based on our knowledge, whether it was contributing or non-contributing.
And we have a second. Are you wanting to revise your motion?
If I'm allowed to.
Is he allowed to, Katie?
Don't we have to vote on it? If it gets voted down, then we can start over. Aren't you glad you came?
Yeah, aren't you glad? Thomas is getting really nervous.
David's comment makes sense. I think we do have to vote on it, and...
I think we have to vote on it, and if it's denied, then you get to revise it personally. That's the way I think it should go, but, but you're the lawyer.
Yeah, I am.
If David and, or if Mr. Becker and Ms. Anderson both withdrew their motion and their second, would that be?
They can withdraw their motion and their second.
I withdraw my second.
I withdraw my first.
Okay. The motion is canceled. What is, is there a new motion to be made?
I move that, I make the motion, move, whatever, that we accept their proposition of demolishing their tree and their garage as stated.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries then. What is our second bit of information, then?
Our second item on the agenda for the day is for a home on East College Street that was demolished recently. They are requesting initial review for construction of a new residence, but on the now local vacant lot on East College Street. This is at 449 East College Street, and it is approximately .18 acres. It is a vacant lot, and it is within the historic overlay zone, and is zoned RS8. At the June 18, 2019 meeting, the Historic Zoning Commission voted to approve the request to demolish the house at 449 East College Street. The applicant is proposing to construct a new house on the now vacant parcel of property in the historic district. The house design is in the beginning stages, and the applicant is requesting review of the proposed front elevation design and input before proceeding with architectural design. The total living area of the proposed house is not yet known, however, the footprint of the proposed structure, as well as the front elevations desired, has been included in your agenda materials. The applicant is in attendance to answer any questions that the commission may have.
If you'd like to come forward and state your name and your address, please.
My name's Thomas Jennings, 121 Gale Lane.
Great. What would you like to tell us about this project, and the reason you, and I, first off, applaud that you're here in a preliminary state, instead of spending a lot of money on design services to then be denied. So, thank you for coming early with an approach that you'd like to see what we think about it. So, thank you very much.
It's your advice, so thank you.
Well, I was hoping to get past that, but, but tell us about the house that you plan. Now, I will state that, and everybody out there should know, that we do not review the interiors of houses.
Okay.
But we're thankful that you included. It gives us some idea about what you're looking for, but can you, can you state the need for this house? Because the house that was there was one and a half, if at all, it may have been just one story. I can't remember if it had a dormer, but you have a need that apparently you need something bigger than what's there.
Yes, we have four daughters, and so, a two-story house is the only thing that we can, that makes sense for us, but we're intending, I guess, in the, we tried to switch to RS, to, excuse me, a 39% lot coverage, but RS8 requires 30% is the max. So, we're condensing our house in a two-story because of the limited footprint. We intend to build a maximum 3,000-square-foot house, which when we come back, we'll have the exact layout and square footage. So, 3,000 square feet max, and two stories is the only way that we think we can make that fit with our 30% coverage. And then the house adjacent across the street from us is two-story as well.
Can you talk further about the houses around, because we're required, as our guidelines, to judge a new structure based on the adjacent heights of buildings and massing and this kind of thing? Can you describe what's around?
Yeah, I don't have the survey of each of the properties, but we intend, when we come back, to have a lot more information about the height, so we can match the setbacks, the massing, and all the historic guidelines. But right now, I'm simply, we've come up with a four-square design, which we believe matches numerous properties in that general neighborhood, and if you guys give us a general approval of the design front elevation, we intend to come back with whatever information you all need, and then I'll consult with Amelia.
And Ms. Kerr has provided some photographs.
I can kind of explain these photographs if you would like. This is standing on College Street facing the lot. There are two vacant lots side by side each other there. As you can see in this picture, there's a stoop right here in the center, or the sidewalk, looks like it might have gone to the mailbox or something. So, this is actually his lot. Of course, you've got this home next door, that would be to his left, and then the empty lot to his right. This is the front of the house to the left of him. This is the home directly across the street from that particular home, and this home would be directly in front of his lot. This house would be beside the empty lot beside him, to the right of them. And this one is a little bit further down, kind of across the street, in front of the one that was one lot down from him, from his lot.
Thank you. What questions does the commission have of the applicant?
Hey, Thomas, I just want to clarify, you own both lots?
No, I own just, just 449.
Okay, 449. So, I know when the two original houses were there, they shared a driveway, so how are you going to work that out?
I have three older brothers, and we don't share very well, so I intend to build a narrow house and have my own driveway, or our own driveway.
Yeah. So, you have enough room on your lot to do, to do both?
Yes, definitely. And if not, we have a six-foot easement to the property next door to utilize, but I think the only way to do that is with a shared driveway, and I have absolutely no interest in doing that.
Thank you. Thank you.
What additional questions does the board, the commission have of the applicant or comments?
Well, I would just say that the, the columns that he's suggesting to use are pretty similar to the columns on their left. Not maybe exactly, but somewhat similar.
I think it's, it's a nice-looking structure and it's in keeping with the rest of the houses. If they were fixed up.
And what about the, the exterior, the siding? Is that wood siding?
It's a, I believe it's a wood siding. We haven't gotten that far yet. I'm, I'm not a builder. I don't know the options. We intend it's wood or I don't know if there's a composite material that can come in its place. I'm not sure.
We have approved composite, a hardy plank.
Okay.
Before.
I assume that's more prevalent nowadays than, than wood.
Drawing says hardy lap siding, four-inch reveal.
Okay. I would imagine a four-inch reveal, for instance, is really too small. At that period, it would be taller, but I would just, if this is approved, get your designer to look at the exposure to the siding to, to make sure it fits in with everything else that's there.
Do you know the total width of the house?
Yes, the, I guess the whole, the entire lot's fifty feet wide, so we intend on making
It's thirty feet.
The house thirty feet.
Okay.
And the, the depth will depend just on the overall square footage and the lot coverage we're allowed.
It appears to be shown as eighty-five, but I hear you're going to adjust it as you need to.
Yeah, it'll most likely shrinks. We'd like to add a garage just once, since we don't have the coverage, I think we'll have to, to dive in and get a little tricky on how much space we have in the house and if we put a garage or if we don't, just to meet the RS eight requirements.
We've had a couple of, since I've been on the board, we've had a couple of houses that were built brand-new and we would want to know the heights of the buildings, if they could shoot the grades and figure out what the height to the ridge is, only immediate ones adjacent to you. So that would be an important feature to know in the review when you come back to us. We would want to know samples of the roof material, the siding, windows and doors and stuff like that, so we can look at all that as a package, as part of the approval process and know that. Anything else people on the commission would like to add?
I just wonder, I, I came to the overlay meeting. Are you aware?
Yes.
About the overlay that's proposed that, that, that lets us build on fifty percent?
Yeah, Amelia has sent me information on that.
Fifty percent, it's going to, if that passes, it's going to change.
I just didn't.
Yeah, she, she had let me know and I guess we're here, I think this is going to take a long time and we'll all become friends. In the end, I know the end result will be fine and that we want to make incremental steps to make it as fast as possible, even though maybe we'll celebrate next Christmas together.
Just as an architect, and I can't help myself, it's just, it's just ingrained. I mean, you, you have the door, the porch, the steps centered on a door that goes to your master bedroom.
Ignore that, we're going to change that.
Yeah, I, I figured that wasn't going to happen. You might change those into windows and just move your steps over to the right and the entrance over there. It won't be symmetrical then, but it would make more sense and you wouldn't have people tapping on your door, door that's really to your master bedroom.
I should have just listed the front elevation.
I think it would look good, too. I'm for.
I think it'd look great.
Having the steps, you know, in front of the entry, actual entry door.
Just slide them down.
I don't, I don't think it has to be symmetrical.
Right. Agreed.
I think it's, personally, I think it's a nice-looking house. I think it fits in well. I think y'all have done a great job.
I would echo that as well. I love the window choice that you've got in the elevation here and the front doors, the covered front porch is a, is a great addition. So, looks great.
Hopefully with your leadership, Thomas, the rest of that block will continue to upgrade their properties.
We intend to be a trendsetter, so.
Anything else the commission would like? Do we need to make a motion on this or that the initial concept is approved? I guess we do.
It would, I think it would.
I make a motion, the initial concept is approved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? If not, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Your initial concept is approved. Congratulations. What other items do we have today that we need to talk about, Amelia?
I believe everybody should have received a email with the new twenty-twenty Historic Zone Commissioning calendar. We need to have to vote on the calendar for next year's meetings and see if anybody had any conflicts with any of that that not, might need to change.
And, and all of those were laid out just like normal, the third Tuesday of, of every month?
That's good.
I don't see anything, it's the, we're all pretty much used to it by now. If that's the case, the chair would welcome a motion to accept the calendar as submitted.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the calendar as prepared, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The calendar then is approved. Anything else, Amelia?
I believe that will do it, Chairman.
And I think, thank you too for the list of phone numbers and addresses and all that. That's always helpful to be able to reach out to each other if we need to or that kind of thing. So thank you very much. Anything else on the agenda today? Amelia?
That would be all, sir.
Chairman Thompson, if you would indulge me, I always encourage my children to watch this show, it's not a show, to watch this, this meeting.
It can be a show.
This event, it can be a show, yes. But I just wanted to take one second and, and since they're at home watching, tell my baby girl happy sixth birthday today.
That's great. Congratulations.
Birthday.
If there's nothing else, the chair would welcome a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.